Thank you. February 3rd, School Committee will come to order. Roll call, please, Lauren.
Ms. Lambert? Here. Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Panerisi?
Here.
Ms. Sarni?
Here.
Mr. Barrows?
Here.
Ms. Caddell?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. Rep. Zett?
Here. Eight members present, plus Ashley, student rep. Welcome again. We have a quorum. We already did pledge allegiance, so let's go with the reading of the records.
Motion for reading placed on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to waive the reading of the records and place them on file, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ice out. Roman numeral four. Reporter Superintendent Ms. Goethe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the Academy Spotlight. I request permission to bring Mr. Eric Norman, Principal of Everett High School.
So move.
Forward.
Go ahead, Ms. Goethe.
No, it's okay.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to bring forth Principal Eric Norman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ice out. Is he also bringing a guest with him? Is it just Mr. Norman?
I would like to request have Mr. Barrett come up as well, if that's possible.
Okay.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to also bring the esteemed Mr. Barrett forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us here this evening. It's always our pleasure when we get to introduce our staff members, our assistant principals, and the students for the Academy Spotlight of the Month. So this evening, we'll start with Mr. Donadoni from the Freshman Experience. Mr. Donadoni, if you could please come forward.
Thank you very much. Once again, it's our honor and really a privilege to present Andrew Floristall from the Freshman Academy. Young man has straight A's in his core subjects, quarter one and quarter two, including several A pluses, while taking advanced biology honors, taking Algebra I honors, English honors, and history honors. Teachers report that he's diligent, hardworking, and truly an example of one of the most outstanding students that we have in the Freshman Academy. So I just want to take this opportunity to present him with his Academy Spotlight certificate. Great job.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say quickly, it's a tough act to follow. I want to thank the School Committee for having the student representatives, advisory council, and the wonderful work that Ms. Yever has done. I'm happy tonight you're able to see the wonderful students, the wonderful leaders we have at Everett High School. So thank you for affording us that opportunity.
At this time, if we could introduce Mr. Black. Mr. Black is from Science, Technology, and Engineering. He'll be introducing his student this evening.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to introduce Mimi Lee, the Academy Spotlight for Science, Technology, and Engineering. Mimi's teachers describe her as a leader in all of her classes. She actively helps any struggling peers. As a World History student, she attends all of the extra help sessions, including Saturday mornings, in order to improve her readiness for the AP exam. Mimi is a valuable member of the STEM Club as the Head of Business. Her achievements in Spanish will allow her acceptance into the Hispanic Honor Society this year. An incredible role model, Mimi is upstanding citizen with an unwavering moral compass. Congratulations, Mimi.
Congratulations, Mimi. Thank you, Mr. Black. Next up, if I could ask Ms. Bob to please come forward to introduce her student.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here with sophomore Luann Cruz. He is in our Health Sciences pathway, and his teachers describe him as conscientious and hardworking. His dedication to his academic success and the success of those around him make him a role model for the other sophomores in the school. In speaking to his teachers, and particularly his coach, I learned that Luann has a passion for soccer. He actually unfortunately was out for much of the season with an injury, but Coach Blast described him as one of the most, if not the most talented player on the team. And I think it speaks volumes about his character that although he was injured, he did not miss a single practice or game for the entire season. So I'm very honored to congratulate Luann on this well-deserved honor.
Thank you, Ms. Bob. At this time, if I could ask Ms. De Natale to please come forward.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
The Academy Spotlight for Business Law and Hospitality is sophomore Jane Odiyari. Jane, as you can see from this brief moment, has an infectious personality. She can make you smile even on your most challenging days. But it is through her determination and hard work that Jane has been able to do a complete 180 in both her academic classes and on the basketball court. She is quick on her feet to answer questions in the classroom, as well as quick to grab a rebound. It is her commitment to herself that drives her energy, her spirit, and her mindfulness in a positive direction every day. She has grown leaps and bounds in such a short amount of time that we can only look forward to what is yet to come for her. It is my pleasure to award Jane. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. De Natale. If I could now ask Ms. O'Reilly to please come forward.
La Academia de Construcción, Mecanizado y Diseño Arquitectónico tiene el honor de presentar el premio Estudiantil Spotlight de Negro a Cristian Pineda Gutierrez. Cristian es un estudiante de segundo año que está en el camino de mecanizado. Su maestro, el señor Blast, describe a Cristian como un líder y en general un gran niño. Él dice que Cristian trabaja duro todos los días y a menudo termina las tareas poderosas de sus compañeros. El señor Blast puede hacer que Cristian actúe como capaz para dirigir, guiar, y ayudar a otros en su clase. Académicamente, Cristian es un estudiante muy exitoso, tomó todas las clases de honores y obtuvo un premio general de 94. En el último trimestre, había obtenido siete calificaciones A+ en los primeros dos trimestres. La academia sima está orgullosa del trabajo que Cristian está haciendo en la tienda y en el ayula. Realmente está en camino de estar preparado para la universidad y la carrera.
Thank you, Ms. O'Reilly. Congratulations to all the Academy Spotlight Students of the Month. One more round of applause and congratulations. And just before we depart, while we saw many student athletes come up, I just want to point to the success of the student athletes this year. The girls' basketball team has qualified for the state tournament. The boys' basketball team has qualified for the state tournament. We have a few athletes on the track team that are moving forward in states, and the boys' hockey team is one point away from qualifying for the state tournament. So excellent student athletes. Thank you to everything they do, and thank you for inviting us here this evening.
I don't know if there are any other questions?
Great job, everyone.
Hey, well, I got you. Real quick, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was last in last week to talk about the academies. What can you tell me quickly?
The Department of...
Thank you, Mr. Parker. For the next phase, for the two additional, do you want to speak to it? Innovation pathways for cyber security and business. Myself, Dr. Reesey, and Abigail, who works with us in the academy, we met with at DESI, and they were very impressed already with the work we've done with the innovation pathways. And the work and what they pretty much said to us, the jewel that they have here in Everett, right next door to their, to the headquarters in Walden, they said, "Everything that they're looking for other schools to do, we're doing already at the high school." So I think it was very successful. I'm hoping what they heard from us, they'll bring it to the Commissioner, Riley, and hopefully with his blessing, we get two more innovation pathways, which would be, I think, four altogether, and remain a leader for innovation pathways in the Commonwealth.
Thank you.
Ms. Murray.
Given what your student representatives brought to our attention, would it be possible for us to be exploring an arts pathway?
Yes, we definitely exploring an arts pathway. We know the wants and desires of our student body. We're looking into that. As we move forward, there is a little bit of a difficulty, because if we want to keep the arts open to everyone, it's difficult to limit it to just an academy. So at this point, we'd love to keep it open so everyone can be involved in the arts, rather than limiting the amount of students that can be involved in an arts academy. But through scheduling, as we move forward, we're going to work that, and in the future, we'd definitely like to start something, because if we can integrate our CTE for carpentry with building sets for drama and painting and art and all that stuff, if we could put that all in one and put it into some classes, it would work really well for us in the future. So that's what we're looking forward to doing.
I don't know if you're aware of this, but there are no high schools in Massachusetts doing it, as far as I know, but there are a few high schools nationally that have an arts pathway. So it might be worth, I could send you a couple of links if you're interested.
That would be great.
It might be worth exploring it.
And Ms. Murray, thank you for that question. I will say, I know Mr. Black and a couple of our assistant principals with Dr. Reesey, with his charge with the academies. I think we're well ahead of the curve right now to hopefully introduce that to the academies and the pathways. But as Mr. Norman said, right now with the space and some of the challenges we have around the schedule, we weren't able to do it this year. We're hoping to hopefully transition it until the next year or two, but we certainly have heard the needs and the wants of the students, and I think, I'm confident I can say, we have the most talented students in the Commonwealth of Fine Arts, so I think they'd find a home here at Everett High School, because they have enjoyed one so far.
All right. If we go back to the drama program, Mr. Demazzo has really taken it a long way in the past few years. If you haven't had the opportunity, Festival is coming up. They have a wonderful play that they've entered in. We have some students here tonight that have been involved in drama, so we'd really like to see that continue to flourish because of the talented students that we have here at Everett High School.
Mr. Parker.
Speaking of Mr. Demazzo, he won an award. Can you talk about it?
Yes, and he get on me because I don't know the full extent of the award, but he was nominated for an award that he's being recognized by the METG, which is the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild, that recognizes him for all the great work that he's done here at Everett High School and the contributions, I believe, that he's made to METG in getting Everett really involved, when before we've been a footnote. Now we're kind of put right in the front of things that are going on. We've been really close about getting into the final rounds over the last couple of years, and that's from the strong work that he puts in with his assistants and all of the students here. And if you have not been to a banquet, the banquet to go to is the drama banquet. So everyone, it really is, it's very emotional. They do a wonderful job, and if you want to come to a banquet, please, if you could put that on the calendar, that's the banquet to come to.
Thank you.
Not that the other ones are not, so I don't want to, but that's a good one.
Get in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Norman.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Congratulations, guys.
Skews with customary thanks.
Absolutely.
Item number two is an update on Senate Bill 2459 relative to healthy youth. At this time, I'd like to invite Julianne Whitson, the Health Coordinator for the Everett Public Schools, up to the front here to present a PowerPoint and updated information on what she's doing across the district.
So move. Motion made and seconded to bring forth Ms. Whitson for the PowerPoint presentation relative to Senate Bill Number 2459. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ice out.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm here because Senator DiDomenico sponsored a bill called the Healthy Youth Act that was passed by the State Senate on January 16th. This bill calls for adjustments to the state's law on sexuality education in schools. The bill is now in the House of Representatives for consideration, and ahead of it becoming law, Mrs. Goethe asked me to update you on the sexuality education program in the Everett Public Schools. The Healthy Youth Act provides guidelines for sexual health education in two key areas: curriculum and notification. Schools must provide medically accurate and age-appropriate information. It should be LGBTQ inclusive and include discussion on consensual behaviors. Other mandated topics include the benefits of abstinence and delaying sexual activity, using contraceptives to prevent unintended pregnancy and sexually transmitted infections, ways to discuss safe sex, communication skills to form healthy relationships free of abuse and intimidation, as well as age-appropriate information about gender identity and sexual orientation. In our program, these topics, which are highly sensitive to some, are presented age appropriately and with less detailed information at the middle school level. For notification, the Act requires schools to notify parents of the comprehensive health education curriculum. This notification should be in English, as well as in other commonly spoken languages. Parents may also opt their children's, children out of the sexuality lessons and be given at least 30 days to review the curriculum. The Everett Public Schools Health Department utilizes three key curricula for sex education. Health Smart is the core health education curriculum for grades K through 12. It is comprehensive, based on research and best practice, and it aligns with the national and state health and sexuality standards. The Get Real curriculum is used in grades 6 through 12. It is an evidence-based program which empowers students to delay sex and protect themselves from pregnancy and sexually transmitted infections. Get Real also emphasizes social and emotional skills. It promotes abstinence. It provides a comprehensive understanding of sexual health, sexuality, and protection methods. It supports parents as the primary sexuality educators of their children, and it is developmentally appropriate, inclusive of LGBTQ youth, trauma-informed, and aligned to national standards. Botvin Life Skills Training is an evidence-based program that is primarily used to reduce violence and substance abuse use, use and abuse, excuse me. However, it is useful in sex education because it reinforces the confidence and skills necessary to successfully handle challenging situations. Additionally, it promotes personal self-management skills and general social skills that encourage students to make healthy choices surrounding sexual behaviors. The Everett Public Schools currently has a policy on parental notification relative to sex education. It has been approved by the School Committee in the past, and it seems to be in compliance with the Healthy Youth Act. A copy of this policy is included in your folder with minor changes that are being proposed for review. For parent notification, at Everett High School, the notification letter has been included in the student handbook. However, for the 2020-2021 school year, we would like to return to sending a letter home to parents and guardians at least 30 days before the beginning of the unit. We'd like to send a letter to parents and guardians in grades 6 through 8 as well, at least 30 days before beginning the unit. These letters will be translated into Spanish, Portuguese, Arabic, and Haitian Creole, and they're also included as drafts in your packets. We will post the policy and notification letter on the EPS website, and a letter will be given to parents and guardians of new students at the time of enrollment. I'd like to reiterate that the Health Department is providing sexuality education to students in a manner that meets the proposed guidelines. The purpose of this presentation was to assure the committee members of that and to update our policy and procedures ahead of the Healthy Youth Act becoming law.
Ms. Murray.
I'm just going to ask a clarifying question.
Sure.
You mentioned the opt-out option for parents.
Yes.
Am I correct in my understanding that if a parent chooses to opt out of a single specific lesson, they can do that without having to opt out of the entire curriculum? They can choose to just opt out of one little piece of it?
Absolutely. And it will be without penalty, and the child will be given an alternate assignment.
Thank you.
Ms. Sarni.
I want to thank you for bringing this forward, because I know I discussed with you that I had some parents concerned that they needed, they wanted more education for their kids, especially the younger ones, that I briefly discussed with you, and I want to thank you for bringing this forward and hoping that the parents do take the opportunity to let their kids learn the right way and be educated correctly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, thank you as well for the presentation. This is the letter that you're talking about, the draft letter?
It is.
It is?
There are two, one for the middle school level and one for the high school level.
Okay. The last paragraph, kind of the last one, or the one before the last, it says, "However, if you do not want your son, daughter, to participate in the human sexual education programs or associate surveys, please write the principal of the high school," Mr. Eric Norman.
Yes.
"Many of our parents do not know even to write in their own language, so I would suggest to, in addition of writing, perhaps contact, speak with, or add all of those so they know that, oh my God, I do not want this, but I cannot even speak English, so imagine getting an email and writing to the principal and say that I do not want this."
We'll make that change.
And also clarifying that they can opt out of individual pieces without having to opt out of the entire thing.
Ms. Goethe.
So because you got the information tonight, the draft letters, I think you deserve time to go through it and make recommendations for any further changes. You can contact Mrs. Whitson or me, and I'll be sure to get the information to her, and we'll work together and get a policy, well, a draft policy is here, but something that we can all live with and support.
Excellent.
So before the next meeting, if you would.
Mr. Parker.
So, two things. One, I haven't had a chance to look at the full bill, but I would suggest that before there might be some type of guidance regarding Mr. Barrows's point, what's acceptable. And as far as the next step goes, so in your presentation, you talked about, you know, we'll post policy, so we would expect you, that, we can't expect that you'd come back with that policy for our approval, for you then to go post, correct?
Absolutely.
The draft is in there, I believe. I think the paperwork got mixed up.
Okay. So with that, when the draft's complete and the policy's ready for presentation, please, you know, put it on our calendar so we can approve it, and then you can move forward the rest of the paperwork. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Goethe.
We also included the piece of a lesson, just to show you the structure, not necessarily the content, but in the curriculum that we use, there's an overview, there are lesson objectives, so the teachers won't stray and get, you know, sidelined by any inquisitive questions from kids. Materials and preparation they'll need, any vocabulary, which is very important, in support for diverse learners. So that's one of the reasons we chose this, Mrs. Whitson chose this curriculum.
Ms. Whitson, from the chair, if I may have everybody's down, just a, it's been so long, I think I had health class 100 years ago, but when this is presented, is it, how often, in terms of curriculum? I think our health class was like once every two weeks or something like that. I mean, how is this presented, if that question makes any sense?
Yeah, it does. At the elementary, at the middle school level, well, the entire elementary level, it's once every seven days, so it's, I think, around a 45-minute class on a seven-day cycle. One of the schools might have a six-day cycle, but about once every six or seven days. At the high school level, it's a semester-long class, and it meets every other day. So it's a significant amount of health education, and the sexuality piece is an important part of it.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Whitson.
Thank you for having me.
Skews with customary thanks, as Ms. Caddell pointed out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number three is an update on restorative justice. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Paulo Lambresia, the Assistant Principal of the Lafayette School, to come forward.
So move.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded to bring forth Mr. Paulo Lambresia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ice out.
And while he's on his way, I may as well let you know that Mrs. Lambert recommended that this item be placed on the agenda. However, when I created the agenda, I put it on the wrong side, so just so you know.
Good evening, members of the School Committee. Thank you for having me. Mrs. Goethe, Mr. Shaw, Ms. O'Grady, thanks for inviting me here to present an update on the restorative justice implementation in the middle school. Just a brief synopsis of what restorative justice is. Restorative justice is a program based on respect, responsibility, relationship building, and relationship repairing, focuses on mediation and agreement rather than punishment. It aims to keep the kids, students, in school and create a safe environment where they can flourish. Restorative justice, the idea behind restorative justice in schools is to develop relationship, mutual ownership, respect for cultural differences and a sense of belonging for all students. It increases school connectingness, which is the belief held by students that adults and peers in the school care about their learning, as well as them as individuals. It also helps facilitate and reinforce social-emotional skills and social-emotional skills development. Implementing social-emotional, social-emotional learning is key to increasing our math and ELA scores, as well as science scores. Our students deal with a lot of trauma outside of school, and they come to school hoping to have a safe place, a positive atmosphere, a place where they can go to someone and speak to them, and be, and know that they can trust that student. And our goal as educators is not only to teach academics, but also teach them social-emotional skills, so they're successful in school, as well as outside of school. So, part one of our implementation plan started last year, 2018, 2019, with the help of Mrs. Goethe. We created a district-wide restorative justice team, which is a team with members of each school, and their role is to be the coach of the building, where they can, once all staff is, undergoes training, their role is to be there for any questions, troubleshooting ideas, be that liaison that they, that teachers might need if they run into a struggling, struggling with a certain part of the curriculum, or a certain student, challenging student, and whatnot, so forth, and so on and so forth. So last year, the restorative justice team, as well as the middle school administrators, the middle school administrators underwent training in restorative practices in school, restorative leadership, social-emotional learning, and culture and climate assessment. The middle school restorative justice team underwent training in restorative practices in schools, social-emotional learning in Tier 1, 2, and 3 restorative justice interventions. Part of the, the training was walkthroughs. The restorative justice team, the members went through the middle school 6, 7, and 8th grade classes and conducted walkthroughs, just to, just to get a... and eighth grade classes, and conducted walkthroughs just to get a feel of the culture, the school culture, get a feel of the relationship between the student, the teacher, the guidance counselors, and the teachers, and so on and so forth. And then, I can just speak on the Lafayette, what we ended up doing at the Lafayette is I met Mr. Brady, the principal, along with the restorative justice coaches, where we're in the process of implementing our implementation plan. So this year, our goal is to create an implementation plan so in the year 2021, we can hopefully roll it out and have a successful implementation. It takes a long, it takes multiple years to do it right. We did it at the high school, and it took us about four years to really create a plan that I thought worked at the high school when I was there. And I don't want to, it's, we have to be very careful in rushing it. I don't, we can't just put a curriculum there without any training. Teachers have to be trained and continuously being trained, along with our coaches, to make sure that it's an ongoing and successful implementation. Also, we did create a rights and responsibilities. Each one of you has a rights and responsibilities document that was at the high school. The high school created a rights and responsibilities document as part of our restorative justice implementation. Mrs. Garcia asked that each middle school create their own. And hopefully by the year, by the next school year, we can have it hung in every, displayed in every school. Just a little bit of data from the high school. So I believe we started the implementation process back in 2012, 2013. In 2016, 2017, it was actually our first year of really implementing it. So based on the data we've received in the school year 15, 16 to last year, suspension numbers and office referrals decreased dramatically. And I think it's because we focused at the high school on creating a positive school culture and building relationships with our students so that they, they knew that they can go to someone if they had any issues or anything going on with, you know, any conflict with another student. Instead of acting out, they were comfortable coming to a staff member and ensuring that we handled it properly and took care of it before they did act out. Next steps? What our next steps is time. Like I said, it takes about three to five years to completely implement it or implement it so that it's a successful implementation in a school. At the high school, I said, it took about four years. The challenge we have at the middle schools is they're five different buildings with five different leaders and five different staffs. So some schools are a little bit ahead of others. Three to five years is an estimated timeline. If you look at the data from Oakland, California, who's the role model for restorative justice and they actually rolled it out, they took about five to seven years. So the three to five-year timeline is hopefully appropriate to make sure that it is done properly. Resources funding, districts do have, some districts have administrative, some at the administrative level that focuses socially, focuses mainly on social-emotional learning. Hoping to get, bring that here, along with continuous PD, continuous training for our restorative justice team and our coaches. Also, continuous professional development for all staff. It can't just be, the teacher-trained teacher model can be successful, but everybody has to have that proper training to make that model work. Continued faculty buy-in. Researchers show that about 85% of staff have to buy in to the restorative justice model for it to be successful. And I think we had that here. We definitely had that here at the high school when we first rolled that out. And continual cultural shift. Like I said before, it's not just another implementation process, it's a culture shift. You really have to change the building to make it a positive culture where students want to come in every day and be successful. And I think we're on the right track. I can speak for the Lafayette, where I think we're on the right track, where students feel as though they have a very positive relationship with their teachers, they're comfortable coming to them when there is an issue, they're comfortable speaking to their peers if they have conflict with their peers. Instead of lashing out or acting out, they're willing to sit down with them, have a mediation with them. And I think, I think that's very, very important to fully implement restorative justice. Any questions? I know that was, that was brief. We're working very, it's a lot of work. Our restorative justice team is doing a great job. They're learning, they want to learn, they're going in to speak to teachers, they're trying to speak to students. We are, like I said, we are creating our restorative justice, our rights and responsibilities document. We're getting student feedback, so their voices are heard as well. It's a lot of work, but it's good work. And I think the kids really, really appreciate what we're doing for them. Any questions?
Ms. Lambert.
To you through the chair. Mr. Lambresca, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
And I appreciate you bringing this up. This has been something, and I was kind of pushing on it because I really wanted us to talk about it ahead of the Student Opportunity Act. And I'm glad you mentioned the social-emotional learning as well as the structures, because I'd like to know how we can support you in budgeting going forward with the structures in the building. And it must be, and I imagine, difficult to only implement at the sixth through eighth grade level, whereas if you're building it up and you have a more affluent, younger student, then your referrals will actually go down.
Yeah.
When you hit middle school.
Yeah.
And then ultimately down. So one, I guess, so I guess two questions, three?
Three questions.
What would that, what would an ideal structure look like in the elementary schools? And would that be scalable to the lower grades?
Yeah.
And are you tracking for demographics? And do, as far as special ed and cultural socioeconomic demographics?
Yes. So let me answer the first question. Ideally, it would, the best model would probably be K to 12. We started at the high school. We thought we needed a culture change at the high school, and we're kind of moving our way backwards. It's, I think it's working. I think the high school worked well, but what we're trying to do is get the middle school piece into play. So that way, when they get to the high school, they already have an understanding of what restorative justice is. Second question, I'm sorry, I forgot what the second question was.
And so what resources would it take to support you? You know, in an ideal world?
Yep.
If we could say whatever you want to make this work?
Yeah.
Starting in September? And then would that be scalable to the lower grades?
Yes. All right. So I think what we need is continuous restorative justice training for all staff, whether it's K to 12, K to 12, everybody should know what restorative justice is and what it entails and what it can bring to a building. In regards to resources, it's difficult for me. I can, I can speak on the Lafayette. It's very difficult to me to speak on the bad English or the witty or so on and so variant. We, and I know I spoke to Mrs. Garcia about it, I would love someone at the district level that can oversee and keep our schools accountable so that way they know that we are implementing it the right way and we're doing what we need to do to make sure that we're all restorative schools when it comes down to it. We look at all data. I'm constantly looking at our attendance data, our truancy data. We're having meetings with our truancy officers, along with our parents. I'm looking at suspensions data, is what we did last year compared to this year. Have we implemented some things at the Lafayette? Yes, I think the past couple of years, we put in peer mediation that I think's worked very well. We, even something, it's small, but even we have staff at the front building that say good morning to every, try to say good morning to every student coming in, just, you know, instead of saying, take your hood off, put your headphone away. That good morning puts them right in that, you know, right sense of mind. So that way, when they go to school, when they go to in their class, they have a positive interaction right off the bat. That's huge. And it, and I know it might sound silly and it might be a little, but saying good morning to someone in the morning can really make their day. Did I answer all your questions?
You did, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Murray.
I have more than three questions.
Sure.
My first question is, is there a written curriculum for restorative justice? And if there is, who is the provider of the written curriculum?
So we're working with Estelle Archibald. She is our consultant. She's been our consultant. She helped us implement restorative justice at the high school. She's been a consultant with us since 2012.
Since the beginning.
Yeah. And she is, what we're doing this year, again, I can only speak for the Lafayette school, what I'm doing this year is I'm trying to schedule restorative justice, restorative justice circles and implementing it on a, into our curriculum for next year. This year, I have a lot of, a lot of teachers that are comfortable enough to run restorative circles. We have a Circle Forward book that Mrs. Garcia is, had, has been given us in that restorative Circles Forward book. I'm not sure if you're familiar with it. It gives ideas about restorative circles for any sort of topic. I believe at the high school, we had, we had a teacher that passed away, and there was ideas about every sort of, and we actually ran a restorative circles the day after we found that out, and it actually helped with the morning, with the morning process and whatnot. Again, we are trying to implement it in our curriculum for next year.
So in terms of Ms. Archibald coming in and training, are you looking at a train-the-train model?
We are, but I think in order for that to succeed, all staff needs to be trained and have a background. And then the train-the-train model would be perfect if everybody's, if everybody gets trained. So I, my theory is, my thought process is if everybody gets trained and we have our coaches to help, help coach them and help answer any questions they have or kind of troubleshoot ideas with them, that's my idea of what I think could be successful. But I think the train-the-train model will only help if we can train everybody before we continue with the train-the-train model. Does that make any sense?
Yes. Can I keep asking or?
Go.
Okay. You said that there's a team made up of members from each of the schools.
Yeah.
How often does that team meet? Who facilitates the team? Who sets the agenda?
Yeah. So Estelle, Estelle Archibald will, will set the agenda. She'll meet with the teams. And then what she'll do is she'll meet with the administrators of each building, and then we'll meet with our team, in our building team representatives. So she'll set the agenda. Every once in a while, she'll ask me to run a meeting, and I'll set the agenda. So for instance, I, we're implementing the rights and responsibilities, so I would set the agenda, explain to them what we're looking for. But mostly, it's coming from her. She's a consultant.
Okay. You talked about walkthroughs.
Yep.
Did you have a data-catching tool for your walkthroughs? And what were you, specifically, what did you ask the people who are doing the walkthroughs to be looking for?
So pedagogy, we, so the, the, hold on a second, let me, let me answer that question for you. So we asked them to look through, there was, there is a template, and I can forward it to you. There are a couple of things that we went to go look at. One is the pedagogy, two is student buy-in, teacher, you know, relationship between student and teacher. Little things like, are there, is there student work hung up on the wall? Is it a welcoming entrance? You know, is the teacher saying good morning to everyone? Is it just, is it teacher-speak, student-listen model, so on and so forth? Those are, those are some of the examples that we were looking for.
Okay.
But I can forward you that, that tool.
That'd be great. I'd love to see it. And finally, you talked about cell lessons. Are you hooking up your social-emotional learning lessons with your restorative justice work?
Yes.
Do you imagine that that's going to be the marriage in the future moving forward?
Yes, I believe so. Social emotional, our social-emotional learning is key. Like I said before, our students have a lot of trauma, and they have a lot going on outside of school. If they're not in the right mind to come into school, then they're not going to learn and they're not going to be successful. We can be the best teacher in the world, I can know the content, it's like the back of my hand. If the kid is not there and he doesn't feel, he or she doesn't feel safe, and it's not a positive atmosphere, they're not, I'm not going to get anything out of them.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Cadell.
Thank you. I just want to say, great program. It's really not a new concept, and some of us dinosaurs that have been around for a while, not to mention any names like Everstang and Parker. This was a program, not as advanced as it is now, I'm sure. But this is something that we did in our schools, and the peer mediation actually did work, work out well because they can relate so much. And I think they probably remember, and a lot of the other people that would remember that probably.
Just a, just a side note, when I was at the Devon School, I was a student mediator. So I thought I'd throw that on the record for you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker before, let me go to Ms. Barrows. Mr. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
And especially bringing up the need in order for this to move forward. Mr. Chairman, I'm looking forward for our budget discussions for the next meeting because it's probably going to take hours because I really appreciate everything that I hear, especially from our assistant principals, our principals, and the needs that they have.
Yep.
Looking forward for that, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the implementation, you have here implementation planning, timeline, 2019, 2020. Where are we at with that?
So like I said before, excuse me, some schools are a little bit farther than others. The turnover in the school was difficult for some schools. I know a few principals, assistant principals got moved around, also the turnover with the staff, the teachers that were on there. So I was lucky enough to be at the Lafayette last year, and I'm lucky enough to have the same staff in place that were on the team. So we're a little bit farther ahead. But right now, like I said, I can speak for the Lafayette. We're in the process of creating our implementation plan and hopefully rolling it out 2021.
So at least at the Lafayette, you are on time?
Yes.
I should say.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Again, it's all estimated. I don't want schools to feel as though they have to rush something out for next year if they're not ready for it, because I feel as though if we try to rush it just to put something out there, you're not really going to get that much buy-in.
I mean, we shouldn't rush, but at the same time, we shouldn't be waiting forever because we do not have the funding to do it, right?
Yeah, I 100% agree with you. I think the training, the entire staff, start of next year, end of this year, start of next year, is crucial for it to be successful next year.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Mr. Lambresca, first of all, I'm going to apologize for calling you Lambresca for all these years. Now that I can see it spelled correctly.
That's all right.
Thanks for not correcting me. So regarding internal and external suspensions, the decrease is by 44%, 65%. Can you convert that to days?
Um.
We went from, you know, 44% using 2,000 days. It's 180 days saved. I mean, can you, can you get us that information at some point?
I could. Right now, I couldn't. That's why I wasn't really good at math, that's why I went to law school.
Yeah.
But I can do that for you. Yes.
That's what most of us attorneys do.
And then a question from Mr. Shaw. The reduction in suspensions, does that have an impact on our absentee rate?
Absolutely. The Department of Education considers an absence as an absence. So whether it's an absence due to illness or an absence due to suspension, it's recorded the exact same way. So a decrease in suspensions will help with our attendance rates.
Does an internal suspension count as an absence?
Internal suspension does not count as an absence from school, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I have one question from the chair. Apologize for this very, very cynical question, but again, I went to law school, I'm not good with math. But I see the external suspension is down by 44%, internal suspension is down by 65%. Office referrals down by 42%. And it just begs the question to me is, does that mean the punishments have been stopped? How, have the actions that would trigger those punishments been stopped?
I think, I think the actions that would trigger those punishments have ceased.
I mean, you follow me?
I mean.
If in the criminal justice system, tomorrow, we decide that, you know, murder is only going to get you 10 years in prison, that doesn't mean murders are stopping. It means we've cut down on the punishment.
Right.
So the fact that the external suspensions have gone down by 44% at the high school, that could just be, we've determined that that action isn't going to be an external suspension anymore.
Right. So what I do as, as an assistant principal, I take any, any issue that comes to me as a learning experience, right? My goal is for students to learn from anything that, we're all educators, right? So my, our staff is teaching academics. My job is to teach students right from wrong. And whether it's, I mean, is it going to, if, am I going to find a cure to completely eliminate suspensions? No. If I did, I would be a millionaire, and I probably wouldn't be here speaking to any of you. And... Um, and, you know, but, but it's, it's unfortunately, no. Uh, but my, my whole philosophy is I take every student that comes to me as, in any issue, uh, in front of me, as a learning experience for that student. Uh, my goal is whether, uh, you know, it's a detention with me or, you know, um, an internal suspension or sometimes external, uh, last resort external suspensions, but is that student gonna, gonna change his, his or her behavior to help him succeed in the future? So that's where, where I look at it. Um, and it takes a lot longer. I mean, uh, it's not always cut and dry, you know, like kid cuts class at the high school, you suspend them. No. It's, why are you cutting that class? Is there an issue with another student in that class? Is there an issue with the teacher in that class? Can me, you and the teacher and the guidance council sit down and talk about it so that way we can set up a plan for you in the future so that way you are successful, you're not cutting that class again? Um, so it's difficult to answer that question, but, um, hopefully I did, but it's, every, every time a student's in front of me, I try to make it a learning experience for that person, to make that student, that young person, a better person long-term.
Okay. Ms. Lambert.
So just to clarify, um, I know, so part of the philosophy of restorative justice is that it's a relative consequence?
Yeah.
You know, so, so if a child or, yeah, a child in the middle school is caught vaping, sending them home for two days may be not the best punishment or even a punishment to them at all, but perhaps, um, some type of educational.
Yeah.
You know, how did it impact the students around you? You know, so it's more that philosophy.
Yes. Uh, my main goal is to keep the student in, in the building as much as I could. Uh, no one wins when a student is externally suspended. One, we don't know where that student is, if they're even being, uh, chaperoned. And two, there's no academic, uh, he's, he, he or she's not getting academically challenged. My goal is to keep the kid in school, uh, whether it's in the office with me for, for an hour and a half and I help that student, uh, or if he's in, in, in the office for the entire day. But as long as they're in the building, uh, they're getting breakfast, they're getting lunch, they're being, uh, someone's watching over them, um, and they're safe. I mean, uh, you don't know where the kids are when, when they're home.
And I, I think that goes back to my question about supports because I think that requires systemic change on top of culture.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, um, you know, you're one person and that, one student might need you, but there might be three others in the hallway waiting.
Absolutely.
Um, so, you know, I'd love to continue the conversation as we go forward.
Absolutely. Yeah. Um, and I'm at the Lafayette School, if, if you guys wanted to come down, um, you know, my off, my office door is always open unless you have a complaint, then I'll send you down to Mr. Brady. Uh, but yeah, my office door is always open.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Yaba.
I'd just like to add to, as a student bought and a student of Everett High, the rights and responsibility in my eyes is working very well with us. Um, Norman always makes it his goal to, in the beginning at the day or even at the end of the day, he always says something that's on it and it always is like permanent in our head to like always treat others with respect, be emotionally safe at school. So I feel like as though is the rights and responsibilities is working very well at Everett High.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. LeBreska.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse with the customary thanks.
With the customary thanks.
Thank you.
Get really good at this.
Yeah.
At the end of this year, I'll have it down.
Item number four is the update on enrollment. Mr. Shaw?
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Garder. I've provided you in your packet, two, uh, pieces of paper. The first one that I'd just like to talk about is the district enrollment. Uh, this is a form that I've given you, uh, a number of times in the past and just, um, for the new members of the committee, we have to separate the pre-K three and the pre-K four numbers. So that first column, uh, pre-K is pre-K four and the far column way over on the right, the other column is pre-K three. Um, as you can see, our enrollment is continuing to climb. Uh, we're at seven thousand four hundred and forty-four students as of, I think I did this last Friday. Uh, that's what we have for enrollments. The, the enrollments in the buildings that are crowded remain crowded. Uh, the Kavarian School, the Lafayette School, uh, the Parlin School, even the Whittier School, although the number is a little smaller at six seventy-three, uh, the Whittier School design is much different than our other school designs and that's, uh, a very crowded building and the classrooms are crowded at the Whittier as well. Um, it used to be then, when we talked about estimating class sizes, uh, year sizes like fifth grade across the district, we used to say there was about five hundred per class. We can no longer say that. We have to say there's about five hundred fifty per class, uh, when we're estimating what we have in each class. Uh, so that's, that's the total enrollment that we have. I don't know if any of you have any questions on enrollment?
Ms. Murray.
Um, I noticed that the two glaring differences are the Adams School and the Webster School where there's actually been about a third of a population cut instead of an increase. And I was wondering if you could speak to any hypothesis the administration might have about why those numbers are shrinking?
The Webster School that, that, you said the Webster School and the Adams School?
So the Webster School.
Yeah.
Went from six fifty-seven to three sixty-six.
Yeah.
And the Adams School went from two oh six to one fifty-four, which is between a fourth and a third of a population cut. That's a substantial cut in population.
The reason, the reason the Webster School is down that many students is because I was able to separate the Webster School extension from the Webster School. So you can see, prior to, prior to getting this sheet, I'm not sure if this is the first sheet that you got that has the Webster School extension as a separate school. Uh, prior to that, all the Webster School extension kids would have been counted in the Webster. The Adams School, the reason for the decrease, the Adams School and the Webster School extension both had a decrease in enrollment, uh, and we believe that the decrease in enrollment is in the pre-K three, uh, age, age level. Uh, we made a number of changes in pre-K three this year, at the beginning of this year. Uh, one of them was charging a small registration fee. Uh, I don't believe personally and in talking to the principals and teachers, I don't believe in parent information center, that that registration fee has stopped people from enrolling. Uh, the other factor was that we went to a three-day-a-week or two-day-a-week in the pre-K three program. I think that's had an impact on enrollment. And the third re, third, uh, major change that we made was students that were not, uh, special education students that, uh, were just general education students had to be potty trained in order to come to pre-K three this year. Uh, so that's, those three changes, I believe the, the diaper situation and in conversations with Ms. Stokes and Ms. Bosco, who were the head teachers at those school, believe that that is the primary reason why our pre-K three numbers are down.
Can you just tell me what was done with that registration fee? Where did that money go?
It's in a revolving account. Nothing's been done with it yet. We, we established, uh, Mr. Demus from City Hall established a revolving account, uh, so that we'd be able to use those registration fees, uh, for preschool. I don't believe we've touched it for, for anything yet this year.
And if you are to spend it, you would bring the, what you're planning to spend it on through us or you don't do that?
No, yeah, that would come through the committee, yeah.
Okay.
We have regular, in, in bills and payrolls and stuff.
So if you had touched it, we would know because we would have approved it.
Yep. Yeah, it's just a regular account, like cafeteria revolving.
Do you know how much money's in that account?
I think it's around ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Is, is my thought, the last time I checked with it, uh, it was about ten thousand, I believe.
Ms. Barrows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, not sure if I missed, I'm sorry I had to step out, but, or if it's part of your presentation, uh, what we've asked in our last meeting regarding students.
I haven't talked about it yet, but I, I have it.
Oh, okay. No, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just, I, just, this was just enrollment, so. Any other, anyone? The second sheet that I've given you is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one more quick question. Is there any plan to reach out to the parents and find out why the enrollment's down at the Webster Extension and the Adams and see if the hypothesis that the staff has is true, that it's about the potty training and not necessarily about the registration fee or the three-two-day-a-week model?
Uh, yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Barrows actually, uh, Ms. Cadillo made a suggestion about us doing a, a survey in regards to that and I think what we're, we're planning on doing, what I was planning on doing is over the summertime, putting that on our website and having it at parent information center as the students register.
Yeah.
Ms. Cadillo.
I'm just going to say it right out. The reason that we decided to go along with the small fee, very small fee, was to start weeding out people that did not live within city limits from registering their three- and four-year-olds and dropping them off at two and a half hours, five days a week. And that was happening a lot. So what happened, what was happening was once those children got in our system, they weren't being checked year after year and before you know it, they're in our first, second and third grades and continuing on. So something had to be done besides the attendance offices that we had such a increase of to, in order to control and have our own Everett citizens and students in our schools. So that's a lot of the reason. It wasn't because of the small fee.
And we have evidence that these schools were inundated with kids from out of the district in the pre-K three and four?
Oh, we absolutely had evidence, a lot of evidence. And it was very annoying because what is happening is we have so many students to begin with of our own and to increase it by allowing people to come in from Malden, Revia, Lynn and Chelsea and anywhere else that wanted to because it was free that we, we had, something had to be done about it. And, and, and the whole potty training thing is really a very big protection for our staff. So that's why we had to get a little bit strict with it. I mean, it was just a little bit too, too liberal for everyone and everything was just going awry at that point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Cadillo. Uh, Ms. Shaw.
Uh, the second sheet of paper you guys, uh, the committee asked, uh, me to get some attendance data at the last meeting. Uh, so this is broken down. This is a two-year attendance at each of the schools. Um, and it's from the beginning of the school year, for both of those years that are given, it's from the beginning of the school year until last Monday maybe, so it's, it's apples and apples that we're comparing so that we have the right, uh, number of school days in there. I think the number to look at is the absent, the second line, which is the absences per student because those are adjusted for the changes in the, uh, total enrollment figures that we have there. I think you, one of the biggest changes that you see, uh, is what we just talked about is the Adams School and the Webster School, whose attendance was at the preschool level at the Adams and at the Webster preschool level was the worst attendance that we had in the district. Uh, and with the changes that we've made, uh, we are, we have a much better grasp of students coming to school when they're supposed to be coming to school. So those two have both improved tremendously. I think that you see a couple of other areas on there. The Madeleine English School went from five point seven absences per student down to three point five students' absences this, this period, uh, this year that we're in. Uh, the Whittier School went from five point three to four point four. This information we compiled and I'm going to be sharing this, we, tomorrow we have an administrators meeting, so I'll be sharing this with all the administrators of those schools, so, uh, they'll, they have accurate numbers. I don't have, and I don't know if anyone was looking for, uh, when we talked about the, the attendance rate at the high school last year and that was a, caused us some concern, they use a whole different metric than we use right here. So I didn't even want to confuse the matter and try to make it because this is only students that were enrolled as of Monday. This isn't everybody that was enrolled and the way the state calculates that, they use a different metric than we, we have available to us. So that's why I prepared this for you in this format that you have here. I don't know if anyone has any questions on the attendance part of it.
Ms. Sani? No, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I haven't been to school a while, but, um, when someone's tardy, do they have to stay after school, make up the time?
Uh, that's a building-based decision. A lot of times they will, or sometimes it's a teacher, the teacher makes up the time after school. Uh, there, I know when I was at the Lafayette, we, kids, students that were tardy, uh, would stay in the cafeteria after school for the days that they're tardy.
So if some of the students come in, like say, two classes later?
Yeah.
Do they have to, like, certain requirements to graduate that are past the next level to have so many, um, days in school to continue on?
There's not, there's not a policy of, as to how many days that you have to have in attendance in order to grad, to be promoted until the next year. We do not have a policy that says that. Uh, but students that are absent excessive amounts of time, uh, we would not look to promote them to the next grade level.
Long as they're passing, they're eligible to move on.
But he, yeah, but even, even at that, I mean, I think there are, attendance, attendance is such a difficult thing to correct, to be quite honest with you. I mean, there, there are attendance patterns that are established when students are very young, like Ms. Cadillo was talking about, preschool and kindergarten and first grade. A lot of times, that's when these patterns are established and to break those patterns, uh, is very difficult to do because sometimes the, the parents of the students that have attendance issues, sometimes they had attendance issues and they don't see the value in attending school every day. So it is, I met with the attendance officers, I meet with them on Monday mornings, uh, usually every Monday or every other Monday morning, and I was talking about a student because we didn't have attendance officers when I was, oh, enough of them at the, when I was at the Lafayette. And there was a student that I had to go to the house to and I took Mr. Constantine, the guidance counselor, went to the house, the student was in third grade, hanging out on the front porch like he was having the time of his life, had no desire to go to school, the parents had no desire to make him go to school. Uh, they were all home, I talked to them all, tried to get them into school. That's when the student was in third grade and I was telling this to the attendance officers and one of the attendance officers said, are you talking about? And he gave me a student's name. He is now seventeen years old, still an attendance problem, moving, he moved out of the city with his father because they thought, thought his father could get him to go to school, but he's moving back to Everett, coming up to Everett High School this week as a matter of fact. His attendance problem has not been solved. Uh, it, it, it's, it's tough, it's really tough to fix that. It's like Mr. LeBreska was saying, it's a whole cultural script you have to make.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Parker was the next one.
So, uh, not so much a question, but just a concern.
Uh huh.
I'm looking at Everett High School. Everett High School is thirty-plus percent absentee rate. Five months into the new school year and we're seeing minimal from nine point three to nine point two declines. Um, I'm, I'm sure, you know, that point one might be a lot over the number of students that are there days, I'm not sure, but, um, you know, if we can just get that down from nine point three to eight point three, that's like a twenty percent cut right there, but it's the work that goes into it. So I'm sure there's more that goes into this number, but of course, you know, if, if we can get the high school absentee rate down, it's going to affect the whole district because it seems like the other schools hold their own, so.
I, I was addressing that issue with, uh, Mr. Barrett and Mr. Norman, uh, earlier, I'm sorry, late last week that I, I met with them, uh, in regard to that. One of the things that they were concerned about is the actual, uh, to verify that those students were actually absent. They're having some issues. They changed the way they do. They don't have a formal homeroom in the morning anymore. They take attendance in their first period class, which could be a different class every single day, uh, with a different teacher that might not be as familiar. In the past, you had a homeroom teacher who was your homeroom teacher for four years that you were in Everett High School. Uh, they were familiar with the students, so they think that there are some issues with some of the record-keeping, uh, the actual just physical record-keeping because some of the, the, the data is not matching the period-by-period data. So, because teachers take attendance period-by-period. So if a student could be marked absent for the day but still be present in some classes. So they're exploring how that's happening, why that's happening, and trying to correct that if that, in fact, is an issue. I'm not a hundred percent certain it is an issue. It's a point that they brought up with me the other day.
I was going to Ms. Yaba next, then over to Ms. Murray.
Just to give an example for the tardies at Everett High, more than, if you have more than, every three tardies is considered an absence. And every tardy you have in a class is considered a detention. It's getting us a way to get rid of our tardies because we have, I know, talking to my, one of my old APs, we have over four hundred students tardy a day. And it's not even that they're tardy from school, it's that they go to the breakfast room and they don't go to class right away. And we try to get them to go to class by, like, putting an incentive, if you don't show up to class, you're going to have to stay after school to make up the time, make up the work. And with the absence for the day, I know for Everett High that past nine-thirty, I believe, is considered absence for the day. And then after that, even though if you're here, you're still considered absent. I know that from a student.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Murray.
I was just going to say that it might be worth exploring the possibility that the data position we had talked about in the previous meeting, that person may be able to clean up some of that.
That would be, that would be a rule of that person, absolutely. And I just, I want to say that the, the correlation between the first sheet that I talked about, the class sizes being so large, I was meeting with the principals and system principals the other day, talking about attendance and attendance rates and whatnot, and some of the schools are getting hit with the flu pretty hard. And the unfortunate thing is, some of our classrooms are so crowded, it is spreading like wildfire. So they brought, they brought that up. I hadn't even really thought about that. And they're just saying, when you look at the dismissals lately, like, whole, it seems like whole classrooms are getting dismissed because of flu season. So just something to keep in mind. And then the, the final part, I didn't have a handout for you, but you also asked about the attendance officers and the work that the attendance officers have been doing. There have been thirty-nine students withdrawn due to residence checks by the attendance officers. That does not include, I don't have a figure of how many students were not allowed into the Everett Public Schools from Parent Information Center as a result of attendance. But there have been thirty-nine students that have been removed. They've done over three hundred residence checks at, at three hundred addresses that have been done. So, and that's multiple, it takes multiple times, and I think I talked about that last meeting, multiple times at each address before you can finally confront somebody and tell them they no longer are, are coming to school here. We still have, we don't have anyone, I know Ms. Ebersay brought up the point the other day, last meeting, about the parent that cuts off communication with us. According to the principals, we don't have any of those going on right now. We do have one family that we believe lives in Saugus, that the attendance officer has seen that there's two students, one's here and one's at another school. And the, the father is vehemently opposed to saying he lives in Saugus. He's, has someone came into the principal's office, said they, he lives with them. And so we're fighting that fight right now on that one. And then there's another student, another family with two students in it, once again, came and met with me, and I said, the attendance officer didn't see them coming out of the house. They insist that they did, so we're fighting that one a little bit. So those are two ongoing, small little battles we have coming on. But, but that's, that's all I have on the attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is February third. The school year started September. And we, we keep hearing that there are students who are not from Everett who are in our public schools. So we have seven thousand four hundred forty-four kids, and we've identified thirty-nine who were not from Everett. So it seems to me that this is not a problem.
I would agree with you.
Yeah.
I would agree.
And three hundred home visits.
And three hundred home visits.
Members, please address through the chair.
Sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Seven, again, seven thousand four hundred forty-four kids and thirty-nine and over three hundred checks. One family who might live in Saugus, the other one who might live somewhere. We are fighting that fight now. So clear is not a problem. Our schools are overcrowded because they are overcrowded, because people are moving to Everett, because they are living Everett.
Correct.
So what we need is actually a new school and not being this witch-hunting to, to find kids that we believe that they are. I mean, I would say that's a problem if, let's say, oh my God, seven thousand four hundred forty-four kids, Mr. Chairman, and we found a thousand, five hundred or eight hundred who are not from Everett. That's, that's a problem. But thirty-nine, personally, that's my own opinion, I, I do not think this is a problem. The problem is, we, well, which is not a problem, we have kids that we have to educate that we might need more schools to fit the, the residents who are moving to Everett. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Everett.
Mr. Parker.
And those thirty-nine students, football players, right? That was meant to be a joke. All right, thank you.
Just, Mr. Bowles, I think the problem lies more with, when we look at the attendance at the high school. People who live here, I think we need to find a way to get them to come to school.
Right, absolutely.
I mean, I think, you know, I suppose. Ms. Lambert. Or Mr. Panarisi.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask Mr. Shaw and, you know, make sure, if I'm wrong, let me know, but I thought the census, the last few years in Everett, of kids being born here is low over the four-fifty, sometimes five-hundred, Mike.
It is, it is.
The birth census.
Right.
Mr. Parker.
If I can address that through the chair. So last month, we had a meeting with the School Finance Review Commission, and, you know, this perception about, you know, the number of Everett schools, kids in Everett schools, right? So we've got seventy-four hundred. So I just used some quick data that I got off the, off the, the internet, right? So we have about forty, the data had about forty-eight thousand people in Everett, and we had, for sake of argument, seven thousand students. So what I did was, I then, because, you know, we, we keep on hearing that the real number's anywhere between fifty-five, sixty, sixty-five. So I took about ten different communities, cities, and, and one town that had populations between, like, say, fifty to sixty-five thousand, and what their student enrollment was. And if you took out the high and you took out the low, Everett was right there. So therefore, you know, it, it's not that the kids don't live here, they do. It's just that, one, the population's inaccurate, and we're still seeing, you know, apartments being rented out from families, that's still going on. And the other thing that's really, really crook on us, and I wish I had a true number on this, is the conversions. If you look in the legal notices in every, every newspaper every week, someone's going in for variance, they go from one to a two family, a two to a three, or a three to a four, you know? And these are more and more families that are coming in. So that's what I think is driving the population. But in closing, I was able to demonstrate, based off our pop, our population, what people think it is, our student enrollment is right on the money. I think Revia has about fifty-five thousand people. They have the same amount of students as we, we do. And it went, the same could be said for, I think it was Taunton and maybe even Marlborough. So, you know, the data's there, it's, it's how you look at it. And I think, you know, thirty-nine people, thirty-nine students, it's a lot of work and a lot of effort. So, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item number five is a request to dispose of surplus furniture and books. Mr. Remski, please.
Thank you, Mrs. Gauthier. Ms. Puleal, the coordinator of librarians, is requesting to dispose of two-hundred-and-twenty-seven books from the library here, the type of nonfiction and informational that have been outdated. And we recently purchased out of last year's money, new, some new preschool and kindergarten furniture. It's not really the desks or the tables, it's, I call them the cubbies, and I did send you some pictures of the old, broken ones. We did repurpose some of them. The good, the stuff that was better is saved, and some of it went to a first grade or a second grade. But I'd like to dispose of the broken ones. There's about forty pieces that really aren't in good shape. Did you notice when you buy a house, usually keep your furniture maybe about twenty years? And if you notice, the English School, Lafayette School, and the Kavarian are all coming up on about twenty years. So I noticed that this furniture was in disrepair and needed to be replaced. So this furniture was delivered during the Christmas vacation, and, but just so everyone knows, it was actually bought out of last year's fiscal money. So I'd like to, permission to discard it.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we allow the assistant superintendent to dispose of the surplus furniture and books.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to allow the assistant superintendent to dispose of the surplus furniture and books. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passed.
I'd like to take items six and seven collectively and request for favorable action. Action, excuse me.
I'll move.
Take a motion. Second.
A motion made and seconded to take items six and seven collectively and move favorable action. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item number six is the acceptance of the following school committee minutes. Adams School, January twenty-first, 2020. Madeline English School, December eighteenth, 2019. Whittier School, January fifteenth, 2020. Item number seven is the acceptance of a one-thousand-dollar donation from Senator Sal D. Domenico for the Everett High School gift account.
Accept the committee report and place on file, and on item seven, accept the donation and set a, send a letter of thanks. Second.
A motion made and seconded to accept item six and place those committee minutes on file, and item seven, to accept the donation, send a letter of thanks to Senator D. Domenico. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Item number eight is the date of the next school committee meeting. Monday, February seventeenth is holiday, so if you'd like to go on Tuesday.
We want to have our next meeting, the regular school committee meeting on February eighteenth, in lieu of the fact that President's Day is on the seventeenth.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to have our next regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, February eighteenth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Roman numeral five, items submitted by school committee members. Number one, request for representation from ETA to give the school committee a monthly overview of grievances and labor charges filed. Mrs. Cadella.
Ms. Cadella.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. In speaking to the ETA in the past, in asking some questions, we have not, obviously not been made apprised of a lot of issues that have gone on. So we don't know. And started thinking about it, and I know we've had some conversations about it. The school board has to approve all money spent on attorneys, whether it's the attorney that we hired or any outside attorneys. We approve the monies that are spent on all the bills. So I would like to know where we stand as far as being able to know what is going on. And I know that there's different tiers, and there's the, you know, the chain of command that it goes up, but I would like to hear from, and we do have the ETA president here tonight, was willing to come up and speak on this, so that we know what kind of information that the ETA can share with the school committee, so that we know what's going on as far as grievances and labor relations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm requesting Ms. Zarga to come forward.
Yes, I request to make a motion to have Ms. Zarga come forward. Thanks.
A motion made and seconded to bring forth Ms. Zarga, president of the ETA. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
As Mr. Parker has just pointed out to me, though, I mean, we, the, the school committee does not get involved until we get to level three.
Yep.
Okay. So now, Ms. Cadella, if you want to elaborate on your request, if you could.
So my request to you, and you know how this started when we found out about these things going on, and I checked with the president, the chairman, he knew nothing about them. And I'm just saying, there's, it has to be a way that we can be informed so that we, we are privy to what we're going to be paying all these bills for. And in conversation, I come up at this and said, "Well, I'll have Ms. Zarga come up and try to explain to us what we can legally know and at what point." Because I know the superintendent, we've been told by our board attorney, that she can tell us things but not reveal the confidentiality part. We can know about things going on but not the confidentiality. So as the union president, I'd just like to hear what you can do to provide us with anything and at what level it does have to be at.
So there are three levels of grievances. The first level would be level one, which starts with the administrator, whether it be a principal or a director, that we would be starting on that level. It's also a level two if it goes directly to the superintendent's office. So sometimes if a level one isn't able to be solved with the director or the vice-principal principal that we've sent that to, then we would go to level two. Some grievances are directly sent to the superintendent's office. Those would be a matter of privacy at that point, that we would keep with the, the level of the director that, and the person that has filed the grievance, or if it's a class action from the ETA. The third level is when we come direct to you. Most grievances are heard at a level one or a level two before we would send them to you, but some would need to be heard if it would be something that would be about central administration coming or a policy coming to you. After a level three, if we aren't able to come to a conclusion, we may send that to arbitration. That's only happened a few times because most of the times we're able to solve most problems as they come and able to get through. A labor charge is a little bit different. A labor charge is something when we feel that there's a violation of work policy, a violation of ethics, a violation of different aspects of the job that need to be heard and have an outside agency, which would be the labor board, come in and help us solve that issue. That's when I think you may be talking about on a bigger level, when the attorney would be coming and representing the school committee. I would have to say, I would love to start conversation on matters of policy. I thought what the students did was absolutely wonderful tonight, and I would love to be able to have those conversations. I know that they brought up some concerns with intervention, which actually affect our workload. So those are the types of conversations that we're having, that we'd be able to really work students, administrate a school committee as a community. I would love to be able to have much more open conversation. I'd love to see all of you much, on that level, much more. I think that the biggest thing would be, I'd be concerned about confidentiality, but I would like to be able to make sure that you are aware of the things that are going on. So, because if we can solve our problems as they come, the problem's going to be much smaller. We're able to deal with things, and we're able to have a much better relationship within the school departments itself. And I have to say that I'm happy, with a top-down administration, the administration working with us and having the relationship that we do, we're able to solve so many more problems. And if we are bringing a level three to you, I feel that the communication and the conversation has to start as soon as possible so that you are aware and you can see where we're coming from, why we're bringing this forward, and whatever practice has been coming forward. I don't know if I answered your question, but I think that that's the direction we'd like to see it going in.
Yeah. When I, because when I had called the National Association, all school committees, and asked about this.
Yep.
He went up that, the three tier for me and said, "Usually if it's a teacher, we go to the principal."
Yep.
Administration, and then, you know, then to the school board.
Yep.
So I understood that. I'm still not clear on the labor relations thing.
So the labor.
How does it end up going there?
It's more if it's a complete violation of the contract. Let's say, I mean, I'm just going to, something that hasn't happened. If you changed our workday, if you've decided that you were going to come and you were going to change our working environment, we wouldn't, and wasn't, you've changed the contractual language of that. It wasn't the superintendent who's changed that. We'd be going to the labor board about something like that. I'm trying to think of some other things that we've been there for. Things that we haven't been able to settle, we feel that there's been transfers that have occurred that may have been a violation of the contract, and we filed grievances, the agreements may have not been able to have gone forward, then that may have gone to the labor board because we feel that these things were done in violation of the contract. So there was, it's more than a grievance, it's more that we're not able to solve that. Couple of times, we went to the labor board because outsourcing of the speech and language and our adjustment councils over the years, we were at the labor board over those issues because we feel that they were part of our bargaining unit and that they were outsourced. So those are things that have occurred in the past that we've landed at the labor board about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If, if I may. In the past, we have actually sat in grievances where people have grieved because they were moved and, or they became unassigned, or they were, you know, switched and weren't happy with it. And we did settle those on, at the school board level. At that point, if it can't be settled there, is that when it would go to labor relations?
Generally, on a level three, we'd end up in arbitration.
And where is that?
So that, again, we would have an MTA attorney, my field rep who's also here, Jill Coleman, would be working with us. So we've had, a couple of times, we've actually had to have an arbitrator come in from the state. So our attorney that's coming from MTA, and your attorney would be used in that. And then the arbit-
So at that point, thank you, Mr. Chairman, at that point, it goes to arbitration, since it wasn't resolved at level three. Is the school board and the administration, everybody's still involved in these arbitrations? We all sit in on it or?
So in arbitration, generally, I've been the representative for the, the member, Jill Coleman, who is our field rep, who's also present, would be there. An attorney from MTA would be present. The last arbitration that we had, the, the former superintendent, the two assistant superintendents, and then the attorney, sat in on those and were part of that hearing. I mean, so that would be the policy on that, but if it was a level three grievance, I, and it went to arbitration, I would have to refer that to the chair of the school committee to see if a school committee member should have been present during those, or would be in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome. But I would look forward to having conversation and having discussions about things that really, we feel would benefit both the ETA, the school committee, and of course, the administration, to really help us focus on the important issues that are coming up.
Good, Ms. Cardello.
Thank you.
Ms. Argu, thank you.
Thank you.
You are excused with the customary thanks.
There you go. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Argu.
Item number two, budget and planning process for fiscal year 21.
Back up for one second.
Whoops, sorry.
I'm sorry.
The matters still before us.
Yeah.
Pleasure.
Ms. Cardello, what?
Oh, we go back to sponsor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer item number one back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Goddard, no, that was, that was me.
Too ambitious.
Go ahead.
Budget and planning process for fiscal year 21, including guidelines, are set by the Student Opportunity Act. Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this item number two to the Committee on the Whole on the Budget.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded to refer item number two to the Committee on the Whole on the Budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Goddard, no, that was, that was me.
Too ambitious.
Go ahead.
Budget and planning process for fiscal year 21, including guidelines, are set by the Student Opportunity Act. Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this item number two to the Committee on the Whole on the Budget.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded to refer item number two to the Committee on the Whole on the Budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have.
On the motion?
Yes.
So I thought I'd present this again, and I'm glad we waited the two weeks. And there's a lot, we're all excited about the Student Opportunity Act. It means more money, right? We're closing the achievement gaps. And with that, now in the language is, you know, they're asking for more involvement from the state, from the school committee regarding outreach and getting input from stakeholders, whether it's in meetings, whether it's in surveys. So there's a rather aggressive schedule that was put together and communicated to us by Ms. Kroll about, you know, a number of meetings that are going on with some of the stakeholders, including this Thursday, the public hearing at 6:00 at the library. So with that, I think it's imperative that we meet quickly, because again, remember, there's a 4-1 date that we have to submit our achievement gap plan to the DESE, and we ask to wait for the guidance. So a lot's happening without a lot of guidance, but I would like to see that we reconvene or have this meeting as a budget of the whole on Thursday, February 13th at 6:00 or 6:30. The reason why I'm picking the 13th is that there's a meeting at the Moose Hall with the administrations and the teachers to get their input, and figure this the same night. And at that point, you know, all the meetings that'll be concluded, that Mrs. Kroll brought to our attention, if we can come back and kind of reassess what we learned, where we need to go, and things we can talk about or present that night, as a suggestion, could be, you know, the strategic plan update. Mr. Bremsky can go through the budget process, also describing what the fiscal year 21 governance looks like, what it means. And then turn, what are the next steps? Do we need another public hearing? We need a survey. What's the content of that survey going to be? Who's going to promote the survey? Who's going to do it? What website's going to host it? And more so, how do we get the message out to get? It's one thing to have a survey, but if no one knows where to find it and ever exist, it doesn't do us any good as it do our due diligence. And then I would like to also see, in the next couple of weeks, that all building leaders have meetings with their school councils, so they can give us their input, and this way we can make sure that we're prepared. We know what the public wants, we know what the staff wants, we know what the administration wants on to achieve those gaps and where to apply this extra funding, so we can respond accordingly to the DESE on April 1st. So with that, on the motion, I'd like to refer this to the Budget Committee on the Whole, to be held Thursday, February 13th, with a time to be determined by Mrs. Goddard, based off your 5:00 end time at the previous meeting. Okay?
So basically, we already approved the motion to have item two referred to the Committee on the Whole on Budget.
Right.
Now, the motion now is to have?
Amended to be the meeting to take place on Thursday, February 13th. I got those dates right.
Good. Have a second.
Second.
Okay, second on the amendment. The amendment now reading that we, this, item number two referred to the Committee on the Whole for the budget, and will schedule a hearing for February 13th.
No, not a hearing.
I'm sorry, a meeting, February 13th.
Committee on the Whole on the Budget.
Committee on the Whole on the Budget. Time to be determined?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, it now?
Okay.
5:30, 6?
6 o'clock.
6.
6 o'clock.
Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Bous.
I am fine with the meeting, Mr. Chairman. Like, I'm not going to be in town. I believe Ms. Cardello is not in town. Ms. Sarni is not neither. Me. I mean, totally fine of going forward. I'm just bringing, bringing up the fact that.
Okay, so.
How's the 12th?
The 12th, the meeting between 6:00 and 8:00 with the ELL Advisory Council. And then if we do something any earlier, we're going to miss the input from the teachers, we're going to miss the input from the ELL staff. So, 1, 2, 3.
Should we tomorrow, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Bous, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Should we tomorrow get an email and see what, which date, propose some dates and see which one works best? If she can send us an email, if it's okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So passed that, the original motion, and now we're basically tomorrow, as an amendment, Lauren's going to send out, we're going to see who's available, what day, as soon as possible. Okay, so that's what we're going to do.
Okay, and I just would say that, again, 4-1 isn't that far away.
Right.
So if it's not the week of the 10th, it's going to happen the week of the 17th. The 17th's a holiday, the 18th we're meeting. I don't think, you know, doing this for a half hour prior to our meeting on the 18th makes sense. There's a lot of information to cover, so.
Or go February 10th.
So, again, the 10th, then we're still missing, we're missing key input from ELL and the teachers. I mean, the teachers are a large stakeholder, and we need to know what, what their priorities are. So, because by taking all these, having these meetings and finding what the priorities are by each of these groups, it's going to help us build the survey. So, because we need that, that part of the data, too.
Can we do a Saturday morning?
Well, you know, here's what, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to amend my motion that, to the original one, to have a meeting of the Committee on the Whole, and we'll have the superintendent's office take a survey to see who's available for when. So, but it's, it's important and we have to act fast.
Okay, so motion was amended to see basically what members are available and when for this meeting for Committee on the Whole on the Budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have.
Item number three, Cable TV Committee, research and report the practicality and feasibility of streaming regular meetings live via the EPS website and/or social media. Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the Cable TV Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to refer item three to the Cable TV Committee.
Okay. On the motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to debate it first.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go back. Let's debate the motion.
So, real brief, we've been adding, we've added onto the website the videotape of the regular meetings, and they've become very popular, especially to people that don't live in Everett anymore, and they're still concerned on what's going on. But was brought to my attention by somebody who doesn't have cable, but access to YouTube, that the city has been doing live streaming, when I say the city meeting, City Hall, the city council meetings. So I'd like to refer this to the Cable TV Committee and, of course, our own staff. To get some background as far as, you know, what we can do and how to do it, I will say this, that in talking to some of the people at ECTV, they're able to do it because they purchased a server. A server costs $40,000. So, so I think it's important to find out how we can do it, what's the cost, if it's affordable, maybe it's in next year's budget, maybe it's not. I mean, we could do something as simple as, you know, a tripod and a cellphone and stream it over on Facebook, but I think, I think we want a better experience than that. So, warrant some merits, so with that, I ask for your support.
Okay, motion was made and seconded, basically, so you want to really see what's available in terms of the potential for this.
Yeah, I've already, I've already spoken to the TV staff. They understand where I'm coming from, so.
So we're going to refer to the Subcommittee on Cable TV?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Item number four, proposal for an independent audit of the Everett Public Schools' finance and budget in conjunction with the start date of the new superintendent. Mr. Apresaze.
Thank you, Ms. Goddard. I spoke actually in reference to this, I spoke to Mr. Demas prior to. I still believe it's necessary, but at this point in time, I've got to, Mr. Demas says it's actually been several audits, there's still audits going on. When I met with the new superintendent the other day, she spoke to me that she also wanted this done, so, but as of this point right now, I think what's most appropriate is probably for this to be referred back to sponsor as I find out exactly what has been done, the way Mr. Demas explained it to me.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to refer item four back to sponsor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Ms. Parker.
So on the motion, I was looking at this, not so much as an audit, but also too, is like, let's peel back our practices and see what we're doing and how we're doing it. Okay, we've had the task force report, and our last month, the Director of Human Resources, Ms. Wahlberg, presented to the body and the city, a new tool, an ERP system called Munis, I believe it was called. And what she did was she laid out what the benefits were of this one depository of information. Because I think what's happened, and my perception is, you know, with the task force, is that there's things that we can do better. We're still doing things somewhat archaic, information might be privy just to one person, it's not a shared document, and we need something that offers more transparency and also more accessibility for the people in the administration. You know, Mr. Bremsky's been diligent to provide us with spreadsheets, but those are tedious. It's not that he can hit a button and find out what the answer is. And I think it's time that we kind of reevaluate and look in how we can make things better. And also to look at the growth, look at the growth, right, of the school system in general. I mean, I've been here since 2002, but I'll give you 2008 comparisons to where we are now. Probably from a financial standpoint, we're spending $50 more a year. We've got 100 more teachers than we did in 2008, and we got approximately 2,000 more students. And I think that we're still doing things the same way that we've been doing for years and years and years. We have a software system, it's called Millennium. I'm not convinced that we're using it for, to its maximum. And I think this warmsome conversation, right? So it's not an audit to see, you know, you know, how are we doing things correctly? I think we're doing things correctly, I just think that we're doing it the long way. And doing it the long way is going to lead to some type of error. I mean, I was excited, Mr. Bremsky told me at the task force report meeting, and I think we all shared with it, because if you went through 2008, 18, you didn't want that to happen again, that we were going to return 2,000, $2 million back to the city. Well, it turned out to be 3.1, 3.2 million. I mean, was that a fault of the system? I don't know. I'd like to find out. So, while I respect your motion, I'd make a motion that we refer this to the Committee on Finance. And I ask for a second.
I'll withdraw my motion then, yeah.
Second.
Motion was made and seconded, as a matter of fact, prior to, to refer it to Committee on Finance, I'd also like to take a moment, thank you, Mr. Parker. When I was speaking with Superintendent Teheliani, she told me Boston has the system set up where you can actually go online, you press a button, you can actually see each school how it's budgeted. She actually did tell me it creates a problem in a way that you could see that one school is getting more money potentially than another school, but then, in this day of, you know, openness, transparency, as young people call it today, that to me is absolutely what is the key idea to what we're talking about, so.
Right, and it can be something as simple as that employee being able to sign on or get an app and find out how much PTO they have, you know? We don't have that. You have to call a person that has a spreadsheet. It's not a shared document. What happens when that person's out? Do you have to wait? So, you know, it's a better employee experience, too. You know, if you have an opportunity, I highly recommend you talk to Ms. Wahlberg. I'll get a copy of her presentation out, because this ERP system, which she has experienced with along with Mr. Demas, is used in about 125 communities in the Commonwealth. Unfortunately, if we did do it, it would have to be the entire system, the city of all departments. Cost probably isn't prohibitive, but from a time standpoint, it would take two to three years, so. With that.
Okay, so the motion was made, yes, Ms. Cardello.
Then I would like to add to the most, and has been seconded, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, then add to it that we invite Ms. Wahlberg and also Mr. Demas to that Committee on Finance. Then they can maybe.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded to refer item four to the Subcommittee on Finance and to invite Ms. Wahlberg and Mr. Demas to that meeting.
And Mr. Bremsky.
And Mr., oh, Mr. Bremsky. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it.
Item number five is the motion to allow the superintendent to hire an associate superintendent effective March 1st, 2020. Mr. Apresaze.
Thank you. In my meeting with Superintendent Teheliani, and I think anybody was, I don't think it's a revelation, but during the search committee process, during several Subcommittee meetings, other meetings we've had, back even before that we knew that Ms. Teheliani existed, I think everyone discussed the potential for whoever the new superintendent is, may want to have their own person, persons come with them. Mr. Parker, in his brilliance today, sent me that Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 59, actually gives the school committee the authority to allow superintendents to have that. Basically, what we end up doing is we determine salary, things like that, but ultimately, my take, how I'm going to speak on this subject is, Superintendent Teheliani has expressed her interest in having this person come with her, and again, I want to, and I know everybody on the committee feels the same way, want to give her every opportunity for her to succeed, and where it's within our power, I strongly hope everybody supports this motion. At the same time, the superintendent is here, if anybody wants to ask her any questions. Mr. Parker.
Well, I don't have a question, but I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Go ahead.
So, so we would add after March 1st, 2020. So, so we would add after March 1st, 2020, to be approved by the school committee, as per Mass General Law 71, Section 59.
And a second?
Second.
So, so Mass General Law 71, Section 59, specifically states that the Superintendent can, you know, bring on a associate or a assistant Superintendent, right? But it has to be approved or disapproved by the school committee. So I just wanna make sure in the language that, you know, we're just reflecting what the law reads. Anybody can look it up online, I've got the book if you want, if you've got any questions. But I think, you know, that's a key component, so I'd ask for a second.
You got it already.
I did.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Parker?
I, I support this for a number of reasons. One, I just laid out the growth between 2008 and 2020. We've had the same number of bodies in central administration forever. Everybody's taxed, you know, and has a lot on their plate. I know in talking to Mrs. Gottlieb, you know, she walks in every day hoping to do, get three things done, and one thing happens and there goes the eight hours. So it just gives, you know, the next administration an opportunity to further delegate some responsibilities, and I think this makes us more impactful, more effective. So I'm in total support of this, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Murray?
I just have a clarifying question. Is there a difference between an Assistant Superintendent and Deputy Superintendent in terms of how we're using the language?
The difference, Ms. Murray, was in terms of trying to come up with the proper title for the person, and we went around from all sorts of things, and I personally think the best title is deputy. That's just from the sound of it, I mean, again, you know, associate, associate where I work, associate is below deputy, deputy, just for what that's worth. So that was the, you know, we have assistants, this would be the Deputy Superintendent.
Thank you.
Ms. Sarni?
How would the processing of hiring be done? Is it gonna be-
Ms. Teheliani has someone in mind already.
Okay, thank you.
Someone that she's already working with in the Boston Public Schools. Ms. Cardella?
I'm just being silly, 'cause I think I'm tired, but I'm just thinking with the word deputy. We're gonna have a new sheriff in town, I guess we have to have a new deputy.
That is definitely one we are looking at. Mr. Bous?
And I'm sorry, just pointed to-
It's Gottlieb.
So is this a typo? What's the title? Associate Superintendent?
Ah, the title of-
Deputy.
When I wrote, right, so the preference is deputy.
Deputy.
Deputy Superintendent. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, on the motion. Motion made and seconded to allow the Superintendent to hire an associate, excuse me, Deputy Superintendent, effective March 1st, 2020, in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 59, with the approval of the school committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
You do the Subcommittee-
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Home numeral six, Subcommittee Report, Committee on Finance, Mr. Parker?
Okay, I make a motion to, to accept the minutes as written and placed on file.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the minutes as written from the meeting tonight, Committee on Finance, and placed on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
Okay, and, Mr. Obramsky, correct me if I'm wrong, but, Ms. Murray, page two, these are the revolving funds, where the money's coming out for this particular pay period. So I think if something was to come out of the preschool revolving account that Mr. Shaw talked about, it would be on this side of the sheet.
That's correct.
Okay, so thank you. It's a good question. So, here we go with the math. Okay, I make, I, I make a motion that we approve bills and payrolls in the amount of
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve bills and payroll in the amount of $1,776,109.11. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say.
And then I'd like to make a motion to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,776,109.11.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pay bills and payrolls in the amount of $1,776,109.11. Rule call vote, please, Lauren.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pennercy?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes. Committee of the Whole, from tonight, Mr. Parker?
Mr. Parker, I'm Mr. Parker, I'm Mr. Parker. Tonight we had our first meeting, it ran a little bit late, no reports ready at this point, so I'd make a motion to lay this on the table to our next meeting for February 18th.
Correct. Second, motion made and seconded to lay this item on the table, the Committee of the Whole from tonight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I say. Bills and payroll, unfinished business, nothing, new business, no hearings, nothing. Item number 11, matter for executive session. Committee-
Mr. Chairman? I'd like to make a motion to take a rule call vote and adjourn into executive session, and then return where no vote will be taken, to discuss strategy with respect to attending Ruckus Conversation Litigation, where an open meeting might be detrimental effect the litigation position of the Everett Public Schools.
Second.
So, motion made and seconded to enter executive session. Lauren, a rule call vote, please.
Ms. Eric?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry, what I do wrong?
Yes.
Excuse me, are we coming back here to adjourn or adjourning?
Oh, adjourning, we add the meeting. I think we had it. Come here? Okay.
We'll come back out, but adjourn, but there will be nothing, there'll be no vote taken. The last, the only thing we will come back into open session for will be to adjourn.
Right, thank you.
Rule call vote, please, Lauren.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Ms. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pennercy?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni? Yes.
Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Ms. Cardella? Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Yes, eight in the affirmative, zero on the negative, School Committee will now go into executive session.